The appointment of the Central Mass Regional Planning Board delegate. Then we'll have town planner update, next meeting dates, and then all the new business. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of July 14? Any questions, comments? If not, we have a motion to accept as, to approve as written.
Make the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
I abstain.
Yep. Very good, okay. Very good. Okay, so the first, we have no ANRs.
No.
So the first public hearing isn't until 6:35, I believe. So do you want to start on your update, or?
So the draft open space, open space recreation plan was sent to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for a letter of support. That's a required step before we can send it to the state for approval. Actually, received a letter of support back in two days with an email saying, "Great job." So I was able to send that to the state last week for approval. I'm sure we won't get approval in two days like CMRPC, but that would be nice. So we'll wait for comments from the state. I'm sure we'll have some revisions. We usually do, so I'll keep you posted on that. And then you may have noticed some restriping taking place at the Dunkin' Donuts at 469 Main Street. So 469 Main Street and the other Dunkin' Donuts on the other end of Main Street, they were approved quite a few years back and the ADA requirements had changed a bit. So the parking lot really wasn't in compliance. So a customer had filed a complaint about the width of the ADA parking spaces. And so the owner came in and we met with him, pulled out the old plans. Sure enough, they don't comply with today's standards. And he was willing to seal and restripe the parking lot. And so Bill went out with him and they remeasured out the parking lot and he restripped it. So he did lose one parking space, but he is in compliance with ADA requirements, which I think is probably more important. I know the parking lot's tight, but at least he's compliant with ADA requirements, so you may have noticed that. I don't think I have anything else I can do that quickly. Next meeting day is August 11th, and then September 8th and 15th. I don't think I can do the next one in one minute, so I think I'll hold right there.
Okay, so we have 6:35.
Sure.
Open the public hearing with the announcement.
This is the application for special permit for Dollar Tree. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 28, 2025, at 6:35 in the central office building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass, and by virtual means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with the applicable law, on the application of Viewpoint Sign and Awnning representing Dollar Tree for the property located at 178 Main Street. The applicant requests a special permit as required by the Sturbridge zoning bylaw, Article 17, Section 300-17.5E regarding the erection and maintenance of signs in excess of what is specifically allowed in the bylaw. In accordance with the plans and applications submitted, the applicant is proposing an 89.57 square foot wall-mounted sign where 30 square feet is allowed under the sign bylaw. A copy of the site plan and application can be inspected at the Sturbridge Town website or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated.
Very good, thank you. Jean, do you have an introduction on this?
Yes, so here this evening, we have Brian Mahoney from Fox Rothschild and Ann Ramsey from Viewpoint Signs. So the board will recall, this was the last vacant space at the, I'll call it reimagined JC Penney space. And this was actually the Anytime Fitness and Walgreens that was combined into one storefront to accommodate the Dollar Tree. The project has been to design review and the facade improvements were approved, as was the design of the sign, pending planning board approval for the larger sign. The size of the sign is 89, proposed is 89.57 square feet, which is very consistent with, bless you, the size of the other signs approved by the planning board. In my report, I have given you some examples. Planet Fitness is 87.25 square feet, Autozone 84.5, Pickleball U is at 80, and Ocean State Job Lot, which had about a similar facade width, is at 87.5. I think this proposal is consistent with the bylaw due to the nature of how set back the storefronts are. I think it's consistent with the rest of the plaza, and I would recommend you approve the special permit. Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Ramsey can fill in any gaps if you'd like any more information.
Very good. Do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
Just briefly, sir, I just want to say thank you to members of the board. Ms. Boubaam, thank you for your time this evening. If there is anything for Dollar Tree, I'm happy to serve as a conduit to get an answer there. But, you know, I appreciate everything that you're doing tonight, and I just respectfully ask for your grant of the permit, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board? If not, can we have a motion then to grant the special permit?
So moved.
I'll second that, sir.
Have a discussion, all in favor? All is going? Very good.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
I'm the owner of the shop.
Hi, guess what she's doing? Welcome to Sturbridge.
Oh, nice to meet you. Pardon?
The guy from the emails.
The guy from the emails. Nice to meet you, Adam. Welcome to Sturbridge.
Adam, do you know when you'll be opening?
I'll say, I'll say after Labor Day.
After, uh-huh, okay.
I'll take the over.
Okay. Just around there.
Well, you know, it's football season, though.
Right. I get it, I totally do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Take your break.
Dan, where would you like the easel?
Honestly, it doesn't matter. I don't know what Jenny has up there for the updated please.
The ones you sent me today.
This is a very busy plan set.
Just want to preface it, no, we haven't opened yet. This is a very busy plan set. I do have a presentation plan on my laptop here as well, kind of a bit more of a colored version. Might make things a bit easier if we kind of get into things and there's more questions.
Well, we'll be opening the public hearing in a few minutes. We've got time here.
On his laptop? Do you have it on thumb drive, Dan? Do you want her to bring it up?
I can plug it in.
She can plug that in if you want. While we're waiting to open the hearing. That's better.
Yeah, if you want to get it to where it needs to be, then I'll just plug it in.
Mr. Water, yeah, great.
Do you want to do the CMRPC delegate while they're getting that situated?
We could do that, sure.
So.
My name? Sorry, what's going on there?
Yeah, so this is my fault, I'm sorry. I completely forgot about it when we did all the paperwork for the registry of deeds and everybody decided you were all staying in the same positions. I completely forgot about the CMRPC planning board delegate needing to be its own separate vote. So Taylor is our representative or a delegate at this time. I didn't know if you were interested in staying in that position or if somebody else wanted to take a stab at that, but we need to have, we do need to have a delegate and we do need to have a formal motion and vote on that position.
Yeah, I think you've done a fine job. You still want to go?
Thank you. Like she said, who would like a stab at it?
My hands have never been fuller, unfortunately.
I can, like.
Yeah.
Well, I've had it for two years, so if we want to divvy it up, this would be a great time. Otherwise, I can't promise that I can, and that's what I feel like I've been missing out on, is the in-person events and things. Like, they just had a, it was a luncheon or dinner over in one of the Brookfields, and I missed out on it because I got my hands full. So, not sure I'm the best one to be fit for this position at this time. However, I've enjoyed it.
If my hands were less full, I would jump at the chance, but I just can't take anything else on right now.
I can see all the hats balancing on your head from here, Molly.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
So is it once a month generally, or once a quarter?
Once a quarter.
Once a quarter.
Yeah, it's once a quarter, and it's the annual meeting. And then there are some online kind of webinar things, which I do try to attend the online, but it's really the delegate is expected to attend the quarterly meetings and the annual meeting.
Usually on Thursdays, I think?
Usually on Thursdays at around 6 o'clock.
Sorry, but they've all been virtual.
Well, they have.
Every single one.
That's interesting. Well, I mean, I could do it if no one else would like to. We appreciate your two years' service. We appreciate you've done all that, certainly.
So.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Charlie for the position of delegate.
All right, do I have a second to that nomination? Molly, are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Charles Blanchard to serve as the position of planning board delegate, CMRPC, for this year.
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
And Taylor, thank you for.
Yes, thank you.
You've actually done a really nice job, because, I will say, Taylor sends notes the next day of, you know, what happened, and it's been appreciated.
There's a lot of good money grants out there.
Yes.
We in Sturbridge can get a piece of, so it is important. It's happy to be part of it.
And a very engaged delegate. It's appreciated.
And I know there's an associate delegate as well, I believe, right?
The board of selectmen appoints two.
Okay, so I'm happy to be the assistant to the main delegate as well.
And we do get, like, one hour for every meeting that you attend. One hour of DLTA service, so.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing.
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 28, 2025, at 6:40 in the center office building, second floor, located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, and/or by virtual means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with the applicable law, on the application of Haley Wood Incorporated representing Old Road Realty LLC for the property located at 660 Main Street. The applicant requests site plan approval as required by the Sturbridge zoning bylaws, Article 19, and site plan review to construct a 40,150 square foot manufacturing building with ancillary office space with associated site improvements as shown in the plans and applications submitted. The applicant also requests a special permit as required by the Sturbridge zoning bylaws, Article 5, Section 300-5.6C, six underground protection district, which is required for any use that will render impervious more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater. This proposal, this proposed use will result in an increase in lot coverage of approximately 54,150 square feet. Copy of the site plan and application can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the same time and place designated.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, so as the legal notice said, this is for a new manufacturing building at 660 Main Street. This is the Sturbridge Business Park as you're heading west out of town, right before Long Pond, actually, the boat ramp. And it is actually, at this time, for an unknown tenant. It'll be, we're presuming, a high-tech manufacturer. There's existing tenants in the upper buildings now that had expressed a need for additional space, but right now it's being built for speculation. There are other manufacturers in the region that are also looking for space that we're aware of, so Mr. Chacheron is confident that he can construct a new building and fill it rather quickly. So the tenant is unknown. This is an expedited permitting site, and it's located in the general industrial district and in a groundwater protection district. The property applicant and owner and review team, which I'll let them introduce themselves, have met with the land use staff as required by the expedited permitting bylaw, actually on two different occasions. Once for an overview and then a second time to discuss concerns of the fire department for a turnaround, which actually I'm seeing the plan, the revised plans for the same time, same first time today as you are with the turnaround that the fire department has requested. The project has gone out for peer review, for stormwater review, and groundwater protection district, as well as the wetland delineation. I've partnered with Lauren Vivier, our conservation agent, on that. We do have our first set of peer review comments back, and that is contained within your packet. The comments actually were very minimal, and I've actually also provided you with my first set of comments, which, again, were pretty minimal. We're lacking information on the traffic analysis, which is my understanding that VHB is working on that right now for us and also for Mass DOT for the access permit. The landscape plan was not stamped by a landscape architect, so that needs to be either stamped or they can request an exception from the board. It's only about 1,600 square feet of landscaping, so I think, you know, either way is fine. It's not, you know, a huge amount of landscaping. And those were, I think, kind of the main things. I think the project's shaping up very well. Not a lot of significant staff concerns were noted. I think with that, I'll turn it over to Dan Sheehan, and he could give you an overview of the project. The board can ask questions. I would recommend that we continue the public hearing until August 11. As I noted, we just received this revised plan. We still need to get the revised stormwater calculations that go along with this and then conduct another review of the materials, so.
Very good, thank you.
Beautiful. So my name is Dan Sheehan with Haley Wood. Just want to say thank you very much as well. Jean did a great job kind of covering everything, but I will kind of go over some things in a bit more broad strokes, maybe perhaps in the peer review comments, and if you guys want to get into anything very specific, I'd be more than happy to do so. So honestly, I mean, from my perspective, there's really not going to be too much of an increase when it comes to traffic in this neck of the woods. You know, Route 20 there is pretty sizable, but nevertheless, it makes sense to do the traffic review, so we went forward with that. Besides that, there's ample parking all over the site. There's kind of two main pods of parking, one kind of in the northeastern side, on that side of, I believe that's building one right in the front there, and on the southeastern side, kind of covered up by the block of text there for that pod. Regardless, we still want to have some convenient parking spaces, making sure, again, for the ADA accessibility as well, having some handicap accessible spaces near the building in case it's needed. As Jean had kind of mentioned, the fire turnaround, we added that as well for actual maneuverability. It's still going to be a little difficult. The way we kind of envisioned it, and I used a vehicle tracking tool, is to kind of come in straight and then kind of back up into that hammerhead turnaround there, so it kind of gives them access. And then for getting out, that access road is honestly not in the best of shape. I think the best thing that makes sense is to come back around, come back out that main entrance. It's just a lot wider, be a lot more easier for fire trucks. Besides that, from peer review standpoint, seemed like everything was relatively minor. The biggest thing was we are going to be improving that existing stormwater basin to bring it into more compliance with the groundwater protection district. Biggest thing with that is just going to be bringing it up out of the water table, expanding it out more, and providing more water quality treatment for it. So it kind of gets a little bit better from an existing standpoint as well as a proposed standpoint. That's kind of the broad strokes. I'd be more than happy to answer anything more specific.
I'd like to actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would like you to go through the building renderings and the landscape plan and kind of the overall layout, and we might need to switch back to Janay's laptop to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you don't mind.
Absolutely.
And I don't know which, which one of you wants to do that part?
Yeah, if you want to do the renderings right now, that'd be pretty concise.
So incoming is Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark Tupelo. I'm with Gorman Richardson Lewis Architects, who are the architect that's been doing the design for the site. So this is what you, it's the front entry of the building, but on the backside of as you approach the building. So we've got a nice canopy entrance there. You can see the landscaping that we're proposing around the building. We've got the loading dock hidden off to the side there, so it's easy access to the site, but it's also not prominent to any of the other views as you're approaching the site. We've broken it up with a variety of different window types and styles. The materials for the building is insulated metal panel. We've got a couple different tones there. We're working more with the earth tones that are present around the site of the existing buildings. The base of the building is a polished CMU block, and then above that is insulated metal panels. We've got curtain wall there at the entrance. You can go on to the next slide. That's a view of the loading dock. We've got some canopies over the entrances and over the loading dock doors there. This is one of the views that you'd see as you're coming up the main driveway, Galileo Drive. We've made the corner very prominent with a sun shade over the windows, the ribbon windows and the corner windows. The corner there is a different material. It's going to be a phenolic panel that's got wood tone to it, and we've made the windows a little bit taller, so it's just got a more prominent feel as you approach the site and the building. Go to the next slide. And as you're coming up the Galileo Drive, that's what you're going to see for the building. So that's more the front, even though the main entrance is on the backside of it. So we've tried to make it a very more modern feel look, upgrading from the other buildings on the site there. So that's a broad overview of what the building's going to look like, the different materials that we're using, so.
It's very nice. It complements the buildings in the back, the original buildings in the back.
Yes.
That whole mid-century vibe. It's really well done.
Thank you.
It's the best-looking back of a building I've seen in a while.
It's an odd one that you have to design two nice faces to.
It's very nice.
And then we've put, Dan's plan will show, we're connecting internal circulation with the parking lots that are on either side for where there's overflow parking, beyond the parking that's directly around the building, so.
Very good, very nice. Any questions or comments?
No. Great.
Seems like it is visible from Route 20.
When you're down at the bottom of the hill and you're looking up, I think you'll catch some of it, but I don't think it's going to be as prominent as you might feel it is because there is such a great difference and so deep into the site.
Right.
You'll catch part of it, but.
Yeah, it's a good-looking building, so.
And they did add street trees going up the driveway, so they continued it. If you remember, some of you were on the board when Heel was built, so they started carrying the street trees up the driveway, so I asked that they continue that up, so they have done that as well.
Very nice. Very good. You have any thoughts or comments?
Just a quick question about, like, loading dock radius, because you have to come up, go through the parking lot, make a turn like this, and then try to back into those docks at that angle. What kind of, what kind of space do we have here? I'm fairly familiar with this property myself, having worked in that property at some point fairly recently.
Yeah.
And I know that there's an access road that runs down the other side, but does it still complete to the base to Route 20 anymore?
It does. It still completes to the base, but it is, it's so narrow, I wouldn't expect to see any significant truck traffic going through that road.
It was used probably in the 1970s, was the last. And so, yeah, what if, what if somebody accidentally kind of goes down there? Say a truck or something like that? That'd be my concern with it, you know, if they come up, they back up, they have to make that radius back out this way.
Yeah.
Or they have to pull up, back up, and then go back the other way.
No, I.
Think you have enough room, but.
We did do a vehicle tracking on it. It's a great question. It is tough. If they try to continue to go down through that access road, I honestly don't think they'll be able to fully commit to it.
Yeah.
I think it'll be, I'll even look at it again, too. Maybe perhaps they can kind of use that fire lane to kind of turn around if they accidentally make that maneuver.
Yeah.
Perhaps some signage or something.
Some signage to say, "Hey, guys, don't go here."
Oh, you're talking about the old access.
The old access road, because that's on that side.
Is it required to be passable now?
I would say it's, it's pretty steep, too.
Yeah, I don't think it's too passable. I don't know if it's, I haven't been down that road in quite some time. I don't really think it's.
I've been down it, I can't tell you.
Completely passable.
It's not great. It doesn't feel good. I do think smaller, compact cars can kind of still utilize that, kind of like that parking that's already existing there.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people kind of cheat on that.
So on the previous site plan, it wasn't required to be passable full road then, is that right?
No.
Okay.
No. This is probably 10 feet wide, and it's covered with brush.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a no-go unless you've got a Jeep or you're adventurous.
A lot of the turning maneuvers, to kind of clarify that question, was essentially to kind of come back in around and then kind of utilize some of those existing passageways to kind of try to square yourself up and come back in. When you're sitting back there, it doesn't really hang out, and then when you kind of come back out, it is going to be tricky, I think. It's going to be most practical or probable as they start coming out, start turning up in between those two buildings, back out a little bit, and then continue out. And essentially go back out through that main entrance. It's a lot wider and well more defined.
Now, the plans that I was looking at, this is different. Plans I'm looking at in the description regarding potential need for an additional fire protection tank on the property, that's not really shown. I know there's a tank up at the far end.
Yep.
Which would be the north side-ish.
Correct, correct.
Of the property on the east-northeast side.
Yep. So we haven't really explored that yet. I think the biggest thing we'll be looking for is to get some of those flow tests done and really see what's going to actually, what is static there, what's existing, and then if there is a need for like a booster or something like that, either something internally, or they could utilize that existing water tank perhaps and try to boost pressure that way. But, great question. I know, I believe DPW have mentioned that as well, and they're going to be, or looking into that as well before construction.
Yeah, so I think if I could just interject, too. So at our, we just talked about this on staff level, because the tenant's not known, we're going to have to put in a lot of conditions about the flow tests and kind of sewer usage and even, you know, industrial wastewater permits, because we don't know what the discharges might be. You know, if it's somebody that, you know, is doing some kind of testing, that might discharge something into the wastewater system, we, you know, they'll have to have an industrial wastewater permit. So I'm working now with DPW and water and sewer and fire to make sure that in the event this permit is approved, we have all of those necessary conditions in there, so that when the tenant is known, we know what we need to require in terms of those flow tests and things.
And this is going to be a public's, public waste water?
It's public, yes. It's public water and sewer.
Right.
Yeah.
Because at one time, I think it was not.
Oh, maybe before my time, maybe.
There was testing wells as well on the property at one point.
At one point, but that's, there's some reports in your packet that they did have a spill up there at one point that's been taken care of, and there is a report from CMG in your packet that addresses that. So you are correct. Yeah.
I, yeah, not.
It's in there. You have another whole meeting cycle to me through.
The details.
Yeah, but you're absolutely correct. We'll, we'll really need to make sure that we're putting all those appropriate conditions because that all needs to be done probably prior to issuance of a building permit.
Do you think that property like that is badly needed in this town, actually?
Yeah.
Flexible like manufacturing, more office space on a larger scale.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of little office units, but nothing of scale.
Yes, and as quick as we get them, they fill.
Very good. So if there are no other questions, I'll take a motion then to continue the hearing until August 11 at 6:35 PM.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Great.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you. I do have some hard copies.
Oh, great.
A blazing crazy song here today. Appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fancy.
Double sided.
Yeah, just noticed that. That's great, yeah.
Great questions.
Yeah, and your building facade is actually really sharp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very nice. I can compliment that older building.
If you have one full-size, I'll take that, but is it going to change a lot between?
I wouldn't expect it to change a lot. The biggest thing I'm just thinking of is just that stormwater. Sometime you can give you one today.
If you have it, I'll take it.
The first one, hard water, one three or whatever. Tank appears. They have a tank.
Yeah, that's where their water line is.
I think it's up that way.
And then do you know what the timeframe will be on getting the updated stormwater calculations?
Utility room and metal here, it just doesn't make a ton of sense. You might move those water connections up here to the corner, put utilities in corners here.
Yeah.
Put some more company.
Okay.
But that means your tank wouldn't be over here.
All right, because the peer reviewers said they need two weeks, and conservation meeting is August 7th. So, okay. All right. Yep, no, I totally get it.
Coming up here, you say this nice corner. And then you say this tank. It's a manufacturing.
And there's no reason why you couldn't put it across the street either, you know?
Well, you don't want to make your water.
No, you don't, but what's 30?
All right, so the last thing that I have on my report is that.
If you try to keep up the double side of the building, you know.
As you may be aware, and you're likely aware, on November 21st, 2024, Governor Healy signed an act promoting a clean energy grid, advancing energy equity and protecting rate payers, which aims to expedite and simplify the permitting process for solar and wind facilities and energy infrastructure, including battery storage systems. So what that means is they're trying to do basically expedited permitting for large-scale solar arrays and battery storage systems, wind farms, and setting up a state review process and a local expedited review process. And when they say small, so small, I think is defined in here as 24 megawatt, which if you think about 24 megawatt, you're looking at about 100 acres of solar. So it's not, small really isn't small. So what they've done is they've hired some regional coordinators, and our regional coordinator is Stephen Mino, and he's covering 80 towns and Sturbridge is one. So he reached out to me and asked if I, you know, wanted to meet to discuss their new kind of regulatory proposal, and I said, well, actually, I hold a land use division meeting on the third Wednesday of the month, and I'd love for you to come and meet with the staff. So he did. So he came and he met with us, and he gave us this proposal, which kind of goes over their timing for when they expect to have regulations, but of course, you know, nothing ever meets our town meeting timelines. So I just thought, and actually, he was, I, we really appreciated him coming out and going through this with us, and he was, I think, appreciative of our feedback as well because we talked about our permitting process here, because there needs to be this kind of one master application that gets submitted to the state and to the town. So they had questions about, you know, where should that go? So here, we said, well, it should come to the planning department, because we're the ones that are used to getting those applications and then submitting them out to other departments for review and comment. We, you know, they, there's a timeline, like everything has to be approved, I think it was within 120 days, and their question was, should that include the building permit? And we said, no, that should be like all your regulatory permits, and then if you get all of those, then you should be able to apply for your building permit, things like that. So I think we had a very productive conversation with him. I think that, I asked him, what happens if we can't amend our bylaw quick enough? And he said, you'd use your local bylaw that you have in place now, understanding that you need to follow our new processes. So supposedly, under this new regulatory framework, there's scoring, and so if you're going to cut down a forest, you will get a lower score than if you were doing something in an open field, things like that. But when we asked, who does the scoring? Well, the applicant does the scoring. So my comment was, there should be checks and balances on the applicant, you know, things like that. So I think our biggest takeaway is going to be, we're going to, A, we're going to need to update our bylaw, we're going to need to probably allow wind and battery storage, which we do not. We did have a wind proposal that failed at town meeting a few years ago. I don't know what we do if these proposals fail at town meeting. I think there are things that we can do to amend our bylaw to encourage solar parking facilities, so that we can say, we are doing things to encourage solar, but we're trying to do it in paved areas. So, you know, I think we have to look at it carefully when the time comes. So right now, it's kind of wait and see. You know, I offered testimony at the CPTC hearing in March, and, you know, we got to meet with him and offered a lot more input this time. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is having a virtual meeting on August 7th. I think I sent you that link. I did register for that webinar. I'd say let's just keep attending everything that we can, let's learn as much as we can, let's follow these timelines really quickly, or really carefully, rather, and, you know, be prepared to amend our bylaw and encourage, you know, Senator Obbs Brook is a perfect example. It's already paved. If they, if somebody, the Host Hotel was a good example. A while back, they were talking about maybe putting a parking structure with solar over it. Their building coverage already exceeds what they can have. So we allow, say, 35% building coverage. They already exceed that, but they want to go on impervious, but that counts as more building coverage. So there's a simple change we can make to our bylaw right there, is change the way we're calculating building coverage for solar parking facilities. And then maybe in between the aisles, you have some kind of landscape strip so that you're still cooling the runoff that's coming off the solar panels before it goes into the stormwater system. So I think we need to think outside of the box and show that we're doing our part to encourage solar without covering every square inch of our open land with solar. So stay tuned.
Very good, yes.
Can you explain what solar parking is?
So I don't know if you've ever been to MassDOT in Worcester, but it's where, it's basically solar panels, and you drive under them and you park, so it shades your car, it protects it from the snow, but yet it's solar panels that are generating electricity.
It's essentially a carport.
It's like a carport that you're parking underneath. So it's, the area's already paved, so you're parking under it. I mean, some people find that they don't like the look of them, but the area's already paved, it's already a big parking lot, so I think that's a better look than cutting down, you know, a hillside and putting panels up on the hillside. It's like you're driving down the highway and you're seeing what used to be a beautiful forested area, or, you know, you see all the beautiful foliage in the fall, and now it's solar panels. I think I'd rather get used to seeing solar parking structures. So I think it's, we have to think about things differently if we want to preserve, you know, some of the scenic beauty in the town.
Sure.
And, you know, I guess stay tuned. We need to stay on top of it, and we need to be prepared for it. And I think, you know, a bigger thing, too, is the battery energy storage facilities. You know, I think that's, that's pretty big. It's impacting some communities already. There's a large one proposed in Ocam. There's a large one proposed in Agwam right now.
One in the southeast.
Yeah, so.
These facilities, just for the storage of the energy, how big would they be?
I couldn't tell you, and they're, yeah, they're big, and people's biggest concerns are, you know, fire safety or groundwater protection and things like that, you know, and Dane may even be a little more familiar with things like that and.
Far above my pay grade.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you had experienced any in your work that you do.
I think my takeaway from a lot of it is parking lots are relatively cheap to produce, and they're a lot more expensive if you put a roof over it. And if you want to build 100 acres of solar, it's not that much money to cut down trees and do a little earthwork, and then you can bring in these modular, click-together little solar packages. If you go to any parking lot USA, you've got to come up with a unique solution for every one of those. I'm not sure the economics are there, but I'm hopeful. But it sounded like, was the state asking us to choose between parking lots and trees? Probably not.
No.
Right now.
They really weren't.
The process would be you need zoning, planning, wetlands, I don't even know what else, right, for the whole package as an applicant, and the state's saying, can we make it easier for applicants to do that one stop shop?
The state's saying, we will be making it easier for applicants. It will be an expedited permitting process.
Right.
Does that include residential?
No, this is for the large scale, so like 24 meg and under will come to the town, over that will go to the state, which I think is, you know, sorry state, but I think it's an even scarier proposition. So you're took, you're looking at solar facilities that are 100 acres or more is going directly to the state for approval.
With no local oversight.
Here again, our, you know, our current structure of bylaw and our water, wastewater and drain water, you know, we have infant regulations for that where we inter things. Now, say somebody, they want to put in a parking lot, solar install, now that's a structure. As Dane was saying, each one would probably be different, planned differently. Would they have to, whoever wants that on their lot, would they have to treat, say they have an older lot that doesn't have the current regulations in place, is it's existing, now they're going to make this huge change, would they have to now try to deter that storm water that comes down on the site?
Yeah, definitely.
What the costs are, would there be an exception for that?
Probably not. So we did talk about, like, you know, our input was they need, they need standards for stormwater management, they need standards as to how we calculate it, because if you talk to different engineering firms or different solar companies, they all have a different way that they calculate it. You know, some say their coverage is, you know, where the posts go in the ground, some say it's the panel. So there, the state is developing model, DOE are, will be developing model bylaws for communities, which come out after these regulations, so there's always kind of, yeah, that's, that's what I always say. So if these regulations come out, and then the model bylaw comes out, you know, after that, so.
Yeah, I would think that potentially could actually deter implementation unless they make it mandatory or an edict that you have a certain minimum within a town, or that you're.
Well, we talked about.
You carry the spirit of doing it.
We've talked, we did talk about that, too. So what if, you know, one town gets 20 applications and another town gets none? Is there a point where you reach, like, say with a 40B, you reach a safe harbor provision? Like, we've already approved three, like, when do we get to say, we've done our part? You know, so we did, I think staff did a really good job of raising a lot of really good points, and he was meeting with a lot of, a lot of his communities in, you know, a few weeks. So hopefully he's got a lot of good feedback, and hopefully something comes of it, so.
And we currently have a prohibition against wind as well, did you say that?
We don't have a bylaw for wind. We did propose one.
So you don't have a prohibition against it, we just don't have a facility to approve it, or a mechanism, rather?
We, right.
Yeah, we don't have any place where it could be located, right? In the parks, we don't allow it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Do we have a policy that doesn't allow it?
Well, in other words, we had a bylaw, we had some proposed, and it was not passed.
It was not passed, so therefore it's not permitted.
And that was a nipping sort of issue, or?
It was just, I don't know, it kind of imploded at town meeting, as sometimes happens with bylaws, so, you know.
Okay, that was a good update, Gene, thank you. Any other questions or comments on it? All right, one of the things, I mean, based on the president's comment this past weekend, it doesn't look like there's very much federal support for any of this cleaning stuff.
No.
Thank you legislatively or financially, so.
Right.
It'll be a whole new ballgame if there's no subsidies.
Really is.
Anyway, okay, that's very interesting. Anything else, Gene?
Nope, that's all I have.
Old or new business? Any old or new business?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
I have a couple questions. When is Five Guys going to open?
They haven't even applied for a building permit, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Is it still going forward?
I have.
How much time do they have before?
Two years.
Yeah, a couple years.
Three years? So, okay. And any more input as to that facility, building up anything new at that location at New Boston Road on the open lot?
Oh, you mean where the other?
Oh, where the fix was going to go? No, nothing at all.
Nothing.
No.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you. Nothing else then, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.